Good evening. It's 6:00 PM, May 10th, 2023, and I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being televised live on local channel 18. So if we could all rise, we'll say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is, anybody have a public comment regarding anything not related to any agenda items tonight? So you can check in with Mary Ann. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. Okay, seeing none, let's move on. Okay, I'm going to ask for public comment on each hearing at the end of that presentation. Okay, Ron Bonvey, Bill Blaisdell, and Jim Gould are absent tonight. Sitting on our first hearing will be our two regular board members, as well as Sharon, Brad, and Charlie. Before we get started, the board received a letter from longtime board member Jim Gould. So Sharon, would you please read that letter?
It's dated April 21st, 2023, and it's addressed to Jonathan Ferbush, chairman. Dear Chairman Ferbush, I am resigning from the Mashpee Board of Appeals due to an upcoming intensive chemotherapy. I thank you and other board members for your collegiality over the past few years. It's been a wonderful experience, and I hope that I was able to contribute importantly to this important town function. Yours truly, Norman J. Gould.
Okay, I want to thank Jim for his many years of service with the ZBA into the town. Jim's always had a warm smile and a great way about him, and we're going to miss him. Jim was a voice of reason, came to meetings with an open mind, and a strong sense of making the right decision. Jim grew up in Maine and loved to fish. Jim spent many years on the Conservation Commission in the Towne of Leominster before moving to Mashpee with his lovely wife Marilyn. I speak for the board when I say that we will truly miss Jim. We wish all the best for Jim and Marilyn. Okay, Sharon, if, would you read the first continued hearing, please?
409 Monmouth Square Road. Owners Thomas and Michelle Guard request a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for the removal of an existing shed and construct a garage in its approximate location on property located in R3 zoning district, map 24, parcel 62-0, Mashpee, Mass, continued from March 22nd, 2023, at the request of the board.
Hi. Go right ahead.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, I'm attorney Steve Guard for the applicant. With me is Raul from Cape and Islands Engineering, as well as the owner, Tom Guard in the back. And we have with us our architect Jeff Metcalf, as well to review the floor plans and the elevations with you this evening. As you may recall, this matter was before the board a few weeks ago, and the site plan review went extremely well. And there were some minor changes that the board had requested to the plan itself with respect to adding some words relative to structure in the coverage section, note three of, on the plan. The, if you recall, the table lists the coverage as the way the board prefers at 100%. And then we also listed the percentages under the old rule, as if it was not 100%, because it's under the floodplain at, and I think this is 409, so bear with me a second. And you're going to find that note three identifies the existing lot coverage under the, the old version at 11.9, and the proposed would be 16.2, well below the, the board's preference of the 20%, assuming, understanding, of course, that we are in the 100% factor because it's in the floodplain. So that's, I'll let Raul mention the other changes that he made to the plan. I think they were minor in nature and more descriptive for the plan.
Good evening. For the record, Raul from Cape and Islands Engineering. So yeah, the, the plan got revised. Part of the new submission was the architectural plans. So now the site plan coordinates the footprint of the proposed garage with that architectural plan. Another change we did to the plan is in coordination with feedback from the health agent. Instead of connecting the sewer from this garage directly to the existing sewer for the house, what the health agent asked us to do is install a separate septic tank, and then the outflow of that septic tank to connect to the existing sewer line that goes to the de-nitrifying septic system. So those are the two major changes to the sign, to the design on the site plan. And it was just a matter of mostly coordinating the footprint of the proposed garage with the architectural drawings.
Yes, Raul and Jeff painstakingly made sure that the plans match, as we found out from the board last, at a hearing we watched the last time before we went off. So the new tank is shown in green on the site plan, so you can easily identify that. And then, as you recall, the garage, the proposed garage does have an accessory apartment up above on the second floor. And it is built to FEMA standards for floodproofing on the first floor. Jeff, why don't you just run up there? You can run through the 409. Architectuals and elevations. Yeah, you'll have to use the microphone, yep. So why don't you come back over here? No, oh, yeah.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Jeff Metcalf. I'm the architect on the project. And the first drawing here I'd like to show you is the, is the floor plans. Obviously, this being a garage, the, the lower level plan has two overhead doors to get in, into the garage in the lower level. And then, as Steve was mentioning, the, the second floor is primarily a accessory dwelling on the second floor. And this, this is a section here, looking through the, the building itself. The exterior elevation. This is, this is the front of the garage here, with a couple of dormers on either side, white cedar shingles, white trim around the perimeter. But these might give you a little bit easier to see. This is the, this is the front of the garage here as well. Again, with the dormers, the overhead doors, white cedar shingles, white trim. And this is the back of, of the garage. We also have the condenser hanging off the wall, so it's not down on the ground. And there's a couple of flood vents that show here, but this is the means of egress out of the second floor. And this is adjacent to the existing house, and that's just a view of both the rear and the side elevations. And this is the, this is a view of being able to see both the house and, and the garage together. That's from. This is from the front with the, the driveway leading to the garage. And then just another view. Of the garage as it looks up against the, the existing house. That's pretty much it.
So as the board may recall, this is the owner occupied. We're going to do 411, the next door that's owned by the same person. This is the owner occupied section. So we'll be applying for an accessory apartment permit. But it was, you know, we were asked to show the accessory apartment on the, on the ZBA plans for you to see.
So how many total bedrooms between everything?
This one is four altogether. Yeah, it's four, it's three and, is it four or five?
Sorry. So yeah, so we submitted some floor plans to the building, I mean, to the health department. The existing house has three bedrooms upstairs. The first floor has a den, so for the purpose of Title V, it's a four-bedroom house. The septic system that exists was approved for five bedrooms. The loft counts as one additional bedroom, so it still stays as one, as five bedrooms for the total site.
Okay.
And we did, they did request, the board of health did request the existing floor plans, which we had from when the applicant bought the property. So we was, we submitted those to verify the layout of the main dwelling.
So the house is all staying? Nothing's changing?
Correct. Nothing touches, yep. I have a couple things.
Yeah, go ahead.
These are minor things, but just more clarification. On your zoning table, Raul, it says two and a half stories proposed. It says existing garage, one and a half, proposed, two and a half. This is just a two-story structure.
It's actually, yeah, the garage is more like two-story, not two and a half.
Yeah, I just, that's just more of a clarification. And the only other thing for the architect and Dave can back me up. Just so you'll know when you, I don't know, be a flood zone, you have flood vents on, I noticed two on the back. I believe Raul can answer this, too. They have to be on adjacent walls. You're going to have to, you can have, if your square footage costs a two, you're going to have to run two different walls.
Right, there has to be flood vents in at least two sides of the structure, so yes.
So you don't have a problem later on?
Yes, it's probably that they don't show clearly, but there is flood vents in multiple walls.
Okay, so I'm on the two back walls. Okay, just, just so you don't have a problem when you go for your flood certification.
It's on the floor plan as well.
Okay.
Just wanted to, I've run into it where, at the end of the job, you go to get your flood certification, and you realize, oh, I'm missing the floodbed on the wall. That, that's all I have.
Do we have any plans for the house at all? Because I see the garage here.
No, no, we didn't. I, I have the floor plans. I can certainly send them to the board. We just, but we don't have any plans.
But nothing is changing?
No, no, we're not touching the house at all, just the garage. The next one, yeah, 411, you may be recalling, 411 is a total raise and reconstruct, so that's going to be both.
Got it.
I have nothing else.
I don't either.
I don't either. I'm fine. I'm good.
And that deck was always there.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, I can do that.
Pretty amazing. It's basically six inches, and it looks like it's in a couple feet where the six inches is.
Yeah. Okay. I was pretty surprised, too. I saw it, but yeah.
I realize that they have family next, next door to each other.
Exactly, yeah. Okay.
Sharon, do you have anything?
Yep, Board of Health, 409 Monmouth Square Road. Protective sleeve of the septic line is approved. Floor plan for four bedrooms in the main house in one bedroom above the garage totaling five bedrooms, no comment. Conservation, 409 Monmouth Square Road. The Conservation Commission approved this project at their February 9th public meeting and issued an order of conditions permit. This project meets the performance standards for Regulation 25. Land subject to coastal storm flowage as the garage is going over previous existing driveway layout. Thus, no removal of native vegetation to accommodate. The shed relocation may involve removal of a couple small saplings.
This is a dotted line.
I have.
You can ask Raul that.
Something from Raul, too. Oh, it's, okay, no, it's, it's from Zach Seaberry. It's 409 dated Monday, the 8th. From Raul, to Zach Seaberry, Heizak attaches the floor plans the homeowner received when he purchased the property. There were three bedrooms in the second floor, plus one den on the first floor. Thanks, Raul. Then, yeah, then dated afterwards. Hello, Raul, I just need the existing, oh, no, we got everything.
Raul, is the shed that's coming down right on the lot line, is that that lighter shaded?
That's correct. It's 0.7 feet off the property line.
And the new, the new building's five feet up the line?
Yes.
So it's increasing.
There was no garage there before, is that correct?
That's correct.
Just that shaded thing's coming out, that's coming in.
But the shed is, was.
Pre-existing non-conforming.
It was pre-existing, it was over 200 square feet, so it was.
So that's how we get to go to five feet?
I think he's fine at five feet.
Do you have any issues at all?
No.
Anybody else?
Nothing.
Anybody in the audience have any comments or concerns on this? Hey, seeing none? Actually, before we do that, let's make sure. Okay, let's close the, okay, Scott, would you make a motion to close the public comments for this hearing?
I'd like to make a motion to close the public comments for 409 Monmouth Square Road.
Second.
Okay, Sharon's second, so let's do a roll call, Raul. Let's see, again, who do we have on this?
I was on it.
Yeah, okay, so Sharon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brad, how do you vote?
Yes.
Charlie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, that's it for the public comment section. Any further discussion before we vote on this? Okay, would you make a motion?
I would like to, I'd like to make a motion to approve 409 Monmouth Square Road owners Thomas and Michelle Guard trustees request a written finding under Section 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for the removal of an existing shed and construct a garage in its approximate location and property located in R3 zoning district, map 124, parcel 62-0, Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mash General Law 48, Section 6. Site plan prepared for TM Guard nominee trust 491 Monmouth Square Road, Mashpee, Mass., Sheet Number 1 of 1, date January 3rd, 2022, drawn by WNHRLR, checked by MCRLR, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering. Drawing title, site plan, proposed garage, revised 223-23. Revised garage location, remove proposed shed, revised 425-23. Add term, lot structures, coverage. Add proposed septic tank, access stairs and balcony. Floor plans, Guard Residence 409 Monmouth Square Road, Mashpee, Mass., 23-011. Lot 409, G1 Garage, proposed garage upper plan, G2 Garage, rear elevation, right elevation, left elevation, front elevation, scale quarter inch equals one foot, prepared by Jeffrey M. Metcalf, RA, date April 24th, 2023. Condition an all-town department comments right into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and Conservation Department. Any changes to the plan to require the applicant to return to this board?
Second.
Okay, Sharon's second. Sharon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Well done.
Thank you, folks.
Pass the plans to the. A lot of trees in this one.
Yeah, a lot of trees. A good letter from Raul.
Yes, yes. Finally, something positive.
Yeah.
All right, let's see, on the next one, Sharon, Brad, and Bob are going to sit on this one. So Sharon, would you read the next continued hearing?
409 Monmouth Square Road. Owners MT Guard LC request a special permit under 174-17.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling with a detached garage in a second-floor accessory apartment on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 124, parcel 161, Mashpee, Mass., continued from March 22nd, 2023, hearing at the request of the board.
Hello again.
Good evening. For the record, on 411 Monmouth Square Road, I'm attorney Steve Guard. With me this evening is Raul from Cape and Islands Engineering. Jeff Metcalf is the architect for the project, as well as the owner. Tom Guard is in the gallery. So this one came before the board a few weeks ago as well. The similar changes were made to the plan in note three, as well as the zoning table regarding coverage. The existing lot structure coverage is 6%. We are proposing 18.4, which is below the 20% the board likes to see, despite the fact that we are in a 100% situation in the floodplain. If you recall, last time, there was a shed discovered at that meeting that was proposed, that was, that was too close to the lot line. We have removed that shed altogether from the previous plan. So whatever sheds will go on the property will not require the ZBA approval. They will go through Dave in the building department for sheds that are allowed by right. They will be located appropriately and whatnot, in the right size, if, if, if they decide to get a shed. As far as the, the other change that I noted on my, is the second floor of the garage is not, we're not going to call that an accessory apartment at this time because it's not going to be occupied by the owner, because the owners live next door. So this one, right, so right now, what you're seeing is the second story of the garage is simply a loft, so it's a bedroom in a, like a living room area. There's no kitchen, there's none of that up there now. If, in fact, at some point down the road, someone does occupy that as an owner-occupied property under your bylaw, they will seek the appropriate accessory apartment from the building department, permit from the building department. That having been said, I'll let Raul run through other changes that I can't recall on the site plan.
Yes, for the record, Raul, you started from Cape and Islands. So similar to the prior project, most of the changes was to coordinate the architectural plans in terms of footprint with this site plan. So in the plan that we submitted earlier, or a couple of weeks ago, we didn't show the access stairs to the proposed house or to the loft above the garage. So this revised plan does show the access stairs in front of the proposed house and in the back of the garage for accessing the, the loft above. A little change, but it doesn't change the footprint, is now we show stairs on the back deck of the house, but it is confined within the area that we previously shown as deck. So in terms of square footage, that's, that's not changing. One thing that we noted on the plan, based on some feedback we received from the building commissioner, is that the proposed garage under for the, for the house, we're not calling it a garage, what we're calling is a parking area. So we're not proposing a slab, because one, one of the things we have to avoid is being more than two and a half stories. So this is just going to be parking under, it's not going to be a slab on grade. It's going to be a story and a half or two stories above this space. The septic system stays the same. The other change, like Steve mentioned, we eliminated the proposed 220 square feet shed, because it was over 200 square feet. It would require to comply with flood zone construction and other requirements. And of course, we don't want to do that for, for a shed, so we completely eliminated the shed. I don't know if Jeff is going to explain the, the floor plan for you.
Good evening. For the record, Jeff Metcalf. Thanks. Okay, so the first, the first drawing here that you're going to see is lot 411. This is the, this is the garage. And so like the previous garage, we've got the lower level plan here that has an overhead door. And then, when you get to the second floor, there is a bedroom and a bath, and just an open living room, and, and, and no kitchen in this particular garage. This is a section through the garage itself. The next drawing is the, the exterior elevations. And, and just to note, this is in the floodplain, so we have two.
Excuse me one second. Brad, do you have garage plans? This is all house plans. Do you have any garage plans there?
Garage plan, yeah.
Oh, we have, yeah, we must have passed them right down there, I'm sorry.
Excuse us one sec.
Yep, no problem.
I just wanted to get caught up.
Site plan.
It'll say G on the bottom, on the banner on the bottom corner instead of H. It'll say G or H, not the cycling.
Yeah, this one says H.
There you go. G1?
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, no problem.
So you, I think Raul said initially there was not going to be any bedrooms upstairs in this garage, is that correct?
No, initially, there wasn't going to be a kitchen, because we can't treat it as an accessory apartment, because no one lives there right now. We don't know if it's going to be owner-occupied. So it's just a bedroom upstairs. There's a bedroom in a, like a little sitting area.
Okay.
Yeah, so no.
Is there plumbing in there?
Yeah, there's a plumbing for the bathroom, which the. Dave, are they okay having a bath?
Yeah, there, there is a difference. It's, it's a sleeping room, and the sleeping room, you can have a bathroom or a kitchen with a bedroom, but not both. But if, when you have both, it becomes a dwelling unit.
Because it's not an accessory, however, it doesn't have a kitchen.
Yeah, so it's a sleeping unit. It's called, it's, it falls under a sleeping unit, which is allowed.
So they can't have a kitchen. If they had a kitchen and didn't have a bathroom, they'd be able to.
Then it would be an accessory dwelling unit, which is, is allowed as well by right, so.
It is or it's not?
It is.
It is.
It's just, it's higher criteria. You'd have to have a primary and a secondary.
So heat is allowed, then?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, this is allowable. The only difference would be is they, they don't need a secondary egress, because it's, it's, it's a sleeping, sleeping dwelling room.
So what we're approving cannot have a kitchen. If they put in a kitchen, they'd have to come back to the.
Not really, because they could do that, they could do that by right.
Right.
They can turn it into an accessory by right.
Okay, did you say they, because it doesn't have a kitchen, it does not need a second egress?
Correct. If they want to change it into a dwelling unit, additional dwelling unit, they will have to put in a secondary.
Even though somebody's sleeping there?
Correct. It's just like it's part of the house. It's part of the house.
If that step is made, what's the, the permitting process for that to be done? Is it through you?
Yeah, it's by right. It's by right. They would be required to come up with a secondary egress, which I'm sure they're fully aware. There's nothing, there's nothing.
So they wouldn't have to come back to us?
No, they wouldn't.
Okay. Okay. So I don't have the condition there?
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
Just dotting i's and crossing t's.
The only difference is the primary and secondary egress, basically.
I'm a zoning enforcement officer, so I'm going to go by these.
Okay.
Okay. So these are the, the exterior elevations. This, this is the front elevation. This is, this is the rear and the two sides. And again, just to give you an idea what this looks like from the outside, this, this is the front of the garage. Again, we, flood vents in the, on the two sides. This is the rear elevation perspective. Well, that's it for the two sides of the, of the garage.
Yes.
Okay, so we get into the, get into the house. This is the existing, or this is the allowable deck area. And as was mentioned, the stair is within that area as well. This is the lower level parking. There is a couple of overhead doors here. That's the lower plan. The first, first floor plan is here. Entry here and, and another stair on the back. This is the second floor, the upper level of the house. And this is a cross-section through the house as well.
Just real quick, on the lower level of the house, which you say is a parking area, not a garage, because it's not going to have a slab. Is that going to be open, or is that going to be enclosed? Are there blowout walls?
That's a garage.
Yeah, it's like little slats. We're just putting slats between the. We're just putting slats between the pillars. Yeah, but water will be able, water, wind, and air will be able to go through that as well, just slats.
So, okay.
Yeah, so on the elevations, this is the front of the house with the two overhead doors. But along the other three sides, we have vertical stone columns and in between are individual slats with air that can go through there or water, for that matter. And then these are the two upper levels.
And the internal staircase that does access the house from inside to the parking area, that is also not finished. That's an open staircase like you would find on the outside of the house. That's, there's no drywall.
So both structures have two floors above an area for parking?
No.
No.
This one has.
The garage is a garage with a living space above it. The house is a parking area with two floors, four floors above it.
Correct.
So going back to the garage, the first floor of the garage, the grade level of the garage is wet floodproofed with the flood vents because there's no living space there. Above that, obviously, the utilities are above that at elevation 14 and well as the first floor of the living space is also above elevation 14. So that complies with FEMA. The house itself, obviously, has to, the entire structure and the utilities have to be above elevation 14.
Because if you enclose, if that became a garage, they wouldn't have to be able to attach four floors above it.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, but I was showing you.
I'm talking about the garage. I'm sorry. It's confusing because you say it's a garage and there's a garage and then there's a, what looks like a garage under the house.
Right.
Very, yes.
Now, yeah.
Yep, so this is the rear with the deck and the stair that comes down to the ground, but these are the individual slats that'll let both air and water come through. This is the other side, again with the stair. This is the garage beyond. These are the two together. This is the garage up front. And that's the house and then with the open slats. The same thing, only the opposite side. So you see the deck here and the garage opposite.
I believe you have the house, the elevation is below the 35.
Yes, it is.
I thought I saw like 34, just below 35.
Yep.
No issues with the elevation, Dave, right?
Um, no.
They show a cross-section line under 35 and I trust Raul has the average grade.
It's also shown on H3 too as well. The height of the structure is shown on H3.
Yeah, I saw that information. And I know, we know Cape and Islands knows you have an average grade.
Yeah, for the record, we did provide Jeff with the average existing grade around the footprint of the proposed house. And these calculations of these heights are based on the average existing grade.
I saw it. For this, 34.
Yeah, I don't see any new non-conformities.
I think it's all done.
All right. Dave, just remind.
Everything fine?
Excuse me?
Everything fine with setbacks and lot coverage?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think they're creating any new non-conformities. I just, I don't see that. So it seems like.
So the garage, the proposed garage, have I got the right one here? This 411? Yeah, it is. So the proposed garage is, I don't know, how far? Five feet from the sideline?
Yes.
And the shed was 3.9, so that's how?
Yes.
So basically, the shed turns into the garage, correct?
With better setback.
Right. And the house is staying on the same footprint, is that correct?
No, the house gets bigger towards the street. But in terms of setbacks, the right-side setback or north side, the existing one is 3.8, the proposed one is 4.0. The south side, the existing one is 15.9, the proposed is 16.0. So they're relatively the same setbacks, a little better.
Okay.
Question for Dave. Your definition of the garage would be if that parking space, definition of garage is if they enclose the walls and put a slab down. Then it would be definition of a garage?
Correct.
If I make a motion to condition it.
A garage needs to have a non-permeable surface, I think likely, and it has to be enclosed on three walls, on four, all four walls, actually.
I think the controversy is story, though. We've got to avoid calling it a story. That's what it is.
It's not a story above grade because of that.
Yeah.
And you can call the room above the garage a sleeping unit.
Okay, I'm fine with that part.
It's not a dwelling unit.
I just want to make sure if I condition something, I want to make sure I condition it correctly.
The deck on the house was there before? Is that correct or is this a new deck?
It's a new deck, yeah.
Does that, that includes this lot coverage?
Yeah, but that's included in the lot coverage.
Right, and we included the stairs within the deck space so that we didn't, you know, what we showed you last time was a rectangle and instead of making the stairs come off of it and then you have to go back to conservation and increase that structure coverage, we just put them inside the box.
Okay. What did conservation say about the deck moving closer to the water?
Okay, I'll read conservation's comments. 411 Monmouth Square Road. The Conservation Commission approved this project at the February 9 public meeting and issued an order of conditions permit. This project meets the performance standards for Regulation 25, land subject to coastal storm flowage. The proposed new house footprint setback was increased from the wetland edge from the existing home. The new deck required mitigation to enhance a diminished naturally vegetated buffer zone. The garage proposed in previous legal altered areas. Board of Health. 411 Monmouth Square, septic approved for five-bedroom.
I think you guys have done the homework.
Yeah, so to answer your question on the deck, the Conservation Commission was happy with the proposed mitigation that Raul had designed down by the water. And there were some other species, non-native species that we had to deal with up here in the driveways, which also factored into the mitigation that they required down by the water. This property's also been approved for a new dock as well, through conservation. And we agreed to change the direction of the dock slightly to preserve some of the natural vegetation at the waterfront edge.
So you're going to come back for the dock?
No.
No.
No?
No, that dock doesn't need to come.
There's an existing dock there, sorry. Yeah, I should have mentioned that. There's an existing dock.
Okay. Any other comments, anybody? Let's see, who's on this? Sharon, Brad, and Bob. Any comments or questions?
No.
Very interesting one. 18 years I haven't had one like this. Anybody in the audience, questions, comments, concerns? Okay, why don't we close the public comment section? So Scott, would you make a motion to close the public comment sections?
I'm going to make a motion to close the public comments for 411 Monmouth Square Road.
Wait a second.
Second.
Okay, Sharon, seconds. Sharon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, any further conversation on this before we vote?
No.
Okay, Scott, would you make a motion on this hearing?
To make the motion to approve 411 Monmouth Square Road, owner MT Guard LC requests a special permit under Section 174-17.1 of the zoning bylaws. The raised place, a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling with a detached garage and second-floor accessory apartment on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 124, parcel 61-0 Mashpee, Mass., with the following conditions. The board is determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mash General Law 40A, Section 9. Site plan prepared for MT Guard LC Project 411 Monmouth Square Road, Mashpee, Mass., sheet number 101, date January 25, 2023, drawn by WNHRLR, checked by RLRMC, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering. Revised 425-23, revised zoning table. Remove proposed shed and access stairs. Revised garage and add lot structures coverage. Floor plans, guide residence 411 Monmouth Square Road, Mashpee, Mass., 23-011, Lot 411. G1, proposed garage, upper floor plan, garage wall plan. D2, garage rear elevation, right elevation, left elevation, and front elevation. H1, proposed house, house lower level. H2, house upper plan and main floor. H3, rear elevation, right elevation, left, and front elevation, prepared by Jeffrey M. Metcalf, RA, date April 24, 2023. Condition that all town documents written to the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and Conservation Department. Changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. The board finds that the proposed project is substantially more, not substantially, I'm sorry, not, I repeat, not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure for use to the neighborhood, or use to the neighborhood. The board finds that the application of Section 174-17.1 that's submitted is not substantially more detrimental than what exists prior to the removal of the existing structure and that there is an adequate land area to provide sufficient parking and there are no new non-conformities being created. Condition that the parking space below the house cannot be converted into the definition of a garage with the closed walls and concrete slab. Any changes to the parking area would require the applicant to come back to the board.
Second.
Hey, Sharon, second. Sharon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Nice project.
Thank you very much, folks. Appreciate your time.
It's an interesting project.
Oh, yes.
He's ready.
The trees.
The torches.
Plenty of paper. Okay, sitting on the next two hearings will be Charlie, George, and Bob. Next two hearings. So read both hearings, if you would, both continued hearings.
40 Evergreen Circle, petitioner, Pastori Escavation, Inc. Request a modification to an existing permit. SP 2021-34 under 174-25G14, 174-45.6, 174-37, Of the zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of a metal commercial building with contractor bays on property located in an I1 in light industrial overlay districts, map 19, parcel 10-4 Mashpee, Mass., owner of record, Chapter Closed LLC, continued from April 26, 2023, hearing at the request of the board. 40 Evergreen Circle, petitioner, Pastori Escavation, request a variance from the front yard setbacks under 174-31, land space requirements of the zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of a metal commercial building with contractors bay on property located in an I1 in light industrial overlay districts, map 19, parcel 10-4 Mashpee, Mass., owner of record, Chapter Closed LLC, continued from March 22, 2023, hearing at the request of the board.
Good evening. Hi. Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing the applicant of this project at 40 Evergreen Circle. Before I begin, I just, and I know I can speak for my father on this, I just want to also thank Jim for his service to this board and wish him the best in his health. So, you know, and I'm going to relay that to my father and let him know that he's retiring as well. So anyways, so this project, just a brief overview that we went over at the last meeting. This is your typical Morton-style commercial metal building. It is a 7,500-square-foot metal building. We're seeking approval from this board, special permit for the contractor bays, which is required, the special permit is required for that. And we're also seeking a one-foot variance of the front yard setback due to the fact that we're only going to be 74 feet off the cul-de-sac. So again, you know, given the unusual shape in the cul-de-sac, we do think that the board would be well within their discretion to grant that variance. When we were here last time, there were several items that the board wanted us to address. First and most importantly was Ed Pechey's comments. And Mark Dibb from Cape and Islands is with me tonight. We believe, I believe that Ed sent an email either yesterday or today stating that he was satisfied with all the revisions to the plan and the operating and management protocols. So I believe that Ed is satisfied in all his comments. So I think we checked that box. The other was to make sure that we followed up with all the department heads and also Tyler from Design Review. Tyler for the vegetation and then all the other departments regarding any outstanding issues that may have come up at site plan. Again, Mark Dibb took the lead on that. He did reach out to all the department heads. It's my understanding that they all have given their stamp of approval. So with that, I'm happy to open it up to any questions. But, you know, I think we've addressed all the outstanding items that this board had from our last meeting.
I want to thank you because you guys did a great job on the follow-up.
Thank you. Well, you can thank Mark.
And they have a laundry list of things to follow up.
Right.
And I think the boxes, as you say, are all checked.
Thank you.
Matter of fact, we talked to Evan this afternoon to make sure that he was happy about the amount of.
Screening.
Abuviti screening you're going to put in on the, I guess, the left side of the lot if you're facing a lot from the street.
Correct.
And we actually called him about 3:30 to verify whether he wanted the abuvites to go the entire length of that. And he said, no, just what they have.
Okay, great.
So that was my only, my last outstanding question. I've looked at probably 25 emails between Mark back and forth, up and down. And I think all the boxes are checked on this. So I want to thank you for your diligence in doing the follow-up on really close to 10 open items on this 40 Evergreen document list. And I'm going to, why don't I go through them one at a time and we can kind of talk about it. Ed Pechey, initial peer review report. Looks like that is all said. We already talked about that. Cape and Islands' response to peer review. Ed Pechey email comments to. Zach-Border Health comments. Tyler, design review. O&amp;M planned, signed. I believe that's signed, right? What's that? Operation in, is that what it stands for?
Correct.
Fire chief, Jack Phalen, email response. He's happy. Ed Pechey, updated review report. These are all good, right, Mary Ann? Because you've made this list and I know you've checked these. Ed Pechey email comments to the board. Evan, town planner comments. We fixed that this afternoon. Ed Pechey. Ed Pesci, engineering invoice for applicant, which I have and will kind of go over in a minute or so. But I think we, do we have comments from everybody, Sharon? That we can just read in to make this official?
Yeah, conservation, no wetlands jurisdiction. Border Health, no comment. All border Health requirements completed.
Hey, a small question.
Yeah, hold on just one sec. I got this from Tyler to Mark. The updated landscape plan looks great to me. We appreciate the wetland seed mix for the bio-retention area. And that's from Tyler Godroll, I think it's pronounced. And this is Friday, April 28 on an email. This is from Evan. We moved four parking spaces to the rear, added a dumpster slash recycling location, and added the abaviti screening along the easily parking. Zack says perk testing being performed today. Revised the typo note on the type tank detail regarding tank size on the side view. I imagine that's all straightened out. Last note, Ed Pesci reviewed the project. His new plan addresses most of the comments. We are still working together on it. Which also resulted in the creation of a photometric lighting plan, which he is reviewing. So is that lighting plan all set?
Yes.
Okay, let's see. I think this is an old one. This is, well, actually, this is May 9. My concern with Evergreen was the line of sight from Main Street to the cul-de-sac has been heavily disrupted. I suggested vegetated screening here to improve the line of sight and to screen the adjacent property. I believe my suggestion was for native species to accomplish this, such as red cedar or perhaps American holly. Although I do believe abaviti accomplishes the intent of my suggestion. And I did talk to him today, and he said he was happy with what you have done. I think we have a finalized two-page, let's see, Pesci Engineering and Associates, the final review, which we can stamp in. And bottom line here, rather than read the whole thing, is he's happy with everything. We also have an invoice from him. It's, let's see, invoice number 2023-2102, invoice date 5/9/23, due date 6/9/23. It's from Pesci Engineering, 43 Proctor, no, excuse me, Porter Lane, West Dennis, Massachusetts, 02670. And it's to the Mashpee Zoning Board of Appeals. Attention, Mary Ann Romero, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. Project and location is Forty Evergreen Circle, Engineering Review Services. And he lists one, two, three, four, five, six line items plus reimbursements from mileage expense, site plan and record plan copies and photocopies expense. Bottom line, 2819.22. So we will get a copy of that to whoever gets it. Also, I have a copy of the operation and maintenance plan for the project of Forty Evergreen Circle prepared for Nicholas A. Pastore, 19 Jan Sebastian Drive Sandwich, dated April 28, 2023. And it's a couple of pages. I do not see a signature, but I think we have a signature on one of them. So we'll get that stamped off, signed off, so. I think we are all set. Did I miss anything?
I don't think so.
I had a couple of questions.
Go for it.
Maybe Dave can answer. Department Meyer. Looking at the plans, is this four bays or one bay?
Four bays.
It's four bay, okay, because the plan doesn't show individual bays.
Right, I think the architecturals do, though.
No, the architectural, it shows the four doors.
Right.
If you look at the floor plan, it just shows one big.
Oh, one big open space. Yeah, I don't know if they've.
So that doesn't matter, does it? Whether it's one bay or four bays, does it make a difference?
Well, they have to be separated, don't they?
Yeah.
Inside?
But they're not structural.
I think, the story, I think, is what the story is going to use to.
That doesn't matter for us, whether they divide inside. And I'm not saying that there's any bathroom.
Yeah, but, yeah, but not on the floor plan.
It's just an open floor.
Right.
There should be floor plans with bathrooms.
Is there any bathroom facilities? I don't think it's any, it doesn't show on the plan that there's any giving any bathroom anywhere. But I know that's a requirement.
Can I take a look at those? There should be a floor plans with bathrooms.
Where did you get that?
Plus the plan, plus the plan, the open, plus the missing one, which is just wide open.
Is there going to be an office in there, too?
There was just bathrooms in the back.
Usually it'll rock in four spots with four bays. It's kind of rock in and it's up to the locker bin.
Right, because they work on a day at a time.
Well, it's not, it don't show anything.
I can forward the plans for Dave to us as we review. I know there's plans with bathrooms along the back. That's why we designed the septic to tie it all together.
Yeah, but I'm just asking, Dave, do we have to condition anything? Or is it going to be approved before bathrooms? So eventually, I mean, border health would have an issue where the border health knows it's.
Yes.
I'm just saying, the plans they're looking for show.
So we should.
We're conditioning these plans.
In order to sign this off, you should sign off an updated plan that shows the bathrooms, correct?
I don't think the board needs to be concerned with the insides.
Okay, if you don't think it's a concern, then I'm not concerned. I just wanted to bring it up because I noticed.
Yeah, I think they just have to, you know, does this meet the zoning requirements?
If he's happy, border health's happy.
Which I see it does.
You know, they have a septic design. I'm good, I just wanted to bring it up.
Same area.
Same area. I mean, there are interior changes, so they're not.
Yeah, I don't think the board needs to be concerned.
Not really a zoning thing, I just wanted to bring it up.
These rectangles, these are to signify bathrooms on the site plan.
Okay, gotcha.
I know if there's a plan, a plan set that exists for the architecturals that have those.
I see the dotted, dotted squares.
This is, this is divided, so it looks like Mr. Pastore is going to use these two bays from southeast, making two bays here, individual bathrooms, and that's the bathroom space for his bays.
Correct.
It's certainly.
I'm comfortable, I just wanted to bring it up because I noticed.
I'm good with them.
Okay. Just want to make sure there wasn't any issues. Okay, then I'm done. With my comments.
I'm good.
Anybody else?
Good.
No. Let's see who's on this. I just had a comment, and it's only in terms of the procedure. When last you were here, I think part of our issue was we had the information from the Design and Plan Review Committee, but all we had relative to how you did or didn't comply was oral communications as to I spoke or I didn't. You know, something like Mary Ann prepared for us with that information, once Design and Review Committee makes their recommendations and then submit that when you're before us, is wonderfully helpful. You know, it focuses on what we need to look at, what we need to question. Because there's a lot of stuff out there. Yeah, but thanks for doing what you did. This was, and Mary Ann put it all together for us, too, so that's wonderful.
Very easy.
Could I just say one thing? Yeah, normally, we would try to do that. We had just received Ed's, Ed Pesci's, final response to comments like that day. You know, so we wanted to, you know, incorporating his thing. So, yeah, it was just the way all the timing worked out, so.
No, understood. I wasn't critical. I'm just, but I just.
Yep, no.
Bob, anything?
No.
Anybody in the audience? Okay, let's close the, oh, actually, we have anything to read in?
No, we already did border health and conservation.
Conservation has nothing, I'm sure.
Border Health is good.
And, yeah. Do we get anything from Catherine, Lauren?
But they did mention the dumpster and the recycling and that. It's fine.
So she, there's no comment on that. Okay, so there's no public comments, so why don't we close that? Scott, would you make a motion to close the public comments section for this hearing?
I'd like to make a motion to close the public comments for Forty Evergreen Circle for the modification of the existing special permit, not payable.
Second.
Okay, George seconds. Let's see, Charlie, how do you vote?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, any further discussion before we vote on this?
I'm not on this one. I'm not officially yet.
Okay, come on now. All right, we're going to do these one at a time, so. Yeah, would you make a motion on the first Forty Evergreen Circle?
I only close the public comment on this one. You only close the public comment on that one. I mentioned that one.
Good idea.
I would like to make a motion to close the public comment for Forty Evergreen Circle for the request for variance from the front yard setback.
Second.
Okay, let's see, George second, so Charlie, how do you vote?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And Scott?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, so let's do the request for modification.
Hey, I'd like to make a motion to approve Forty Evergreen Circle, petitioner, Pastore Escavation Incorporated, request a modification to the existing special permit. SP 2021-34 under Section 174-25G (14), Section 174-24C (9), B (174-45.6), Section 174-37, Section 174-41 (M) of the zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of a metal commercial building, of a metal commercial building with contractor bays on property located in an I-1 light industrial overlay district. MAP 19, parcel 10-4, Mashpee, Mass., owner of record, Chapter Closed LLC. With the following conditions, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mash General Law 48, Section 9. Proposed site development plan prepared for Nicholas A. Pastore, Project Forty Evergreen Circle, Mashpee, Mass., date March 10, 2023, Page 1, cover sheet, Page 2, existing conditions, Page 3, layout plan, Page 4, grading and utility plan, Page 5, septic plan, Page 6, construction details, prepared by Cape Town Islands Engineering, stamped and signed by Mark Dibb, number 45937, revised Page 1 of 6, date 4/25/23. Move four spaces, add landscaping, revised Page 5 of 6, date 4/28/23. Add test pit data, O&amp;M plan dated 4/4/23 and signed by applicant. Floor plans, project name, Pastore Escavation Forty Evergreen Circle, Mashpee, Mass., date 1/25/23, scale 3/16 of an inch equals one foot. Prepared by Prigg &amp; Steel Rentham, Mass., stamped by Theater C. Greenlaw Professional Engineer, number 29093. S1 through S6, revised S2 depicting shutters added on windows. Condition on all department, comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Fire Department and Border Health. Condition on the recommendation from the Design and Plan Review Committee read into the record at CBA meeting on April 26, 2023. Condition on Pesci Engineering and Associates peer review reported dated April 20, 2023, and May 5, 2023. Prior to the request of the building permit, the applicant shall issue a working capital account in the amount of $5,000. The check shall be issued to the town of Mashpee to utilize, to pay for the initial peer review and for the future peer review inspections and sign-offs. Any changes in the use of this building bays will require the applicant, application for the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Give me a second.
Second.
Okay, George second, so Charlie, how do you vote?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes care of one of them. So let's do the variance.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Forty Evergreen Circle, petitioner, Pastore Escavation Incorporated, request a variance from the front yard setback under Section 174-31, land space requirements of the zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of a metal commercial building with a contractor base on a property located in I-1 light industrial overlay district. MAP 19, parcel 10-4, Mashpee, Mass., owner of record, Chapter Closed LLC, with the following conditions. Board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mash General Law 48.
Variants.
Uh, should be variants, yeah.
Good catch.
Thank you for listening. I'm just coming out. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a variance under Mash General Law 48, Section 10. Proposed site plan, site development plan prepared for Nicholas A. Pastore, Project Forty A. Evergreen Circle, Mashpee, Mass., date March 10, 2023, Page 1, cover sheet, Page 2, existing conditions, Page 3, layout plan, Page 4, grading and utility plan, Page 5, septic plan, Page 6, construction details, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, stamped and signed by Mark Dibb, number 45937, revised Page 1 of 6, date 4/25/23. Move four spaces, add landscaping, revised 5 of 6, date 4/28/23. Add test pit data, O&amp;M plan dated April 28, 2023, and signed by applicant. Floor plan, project name, Pastore Escavation Forty A. Evergreen Circle, Mashpee, Mass., date 1/25/23, special 3, scale 3/16 of an inch equals one foot. Prepared by Prigg &amp; Steel Rentham, Mass., stamped by Theater C. Greenlaw Professional Engineer, number 29093. S1 through S6, revised S2 depicting shutters added on the windows. Board has issues, the variance in the amount of one foot?
One foot, yes.
One foot, one foot.
Give me a second.
Second.
Charlie seconds. All right, Charlie, how do you vote?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you very much.
Nice project.
Good work.
Thank you for the follow-up.
Sure. It's a nice, one of my students gave it to me.
Man, a lot of people tonight. Stamp that? Okay, let me stop this one.
I found, I found.
Yes, we're not. That is the first one. These are for you.
Okay, you didn't have to move.
Maybe I've done that. Still hurts. Oh, you brought a marker.
I'm good. Very smart.
Okay, that's yours. That's yours. Okay, these two?
I bought a marker today. It's UV waterproof. It was like eight bucks for one marker.
One marker?
Yeah, so, because it's Sharpie, I have to write on a sign. Sharpie's big to the sun.
Okay, will I do it?
Possibly eight bucks to get it on Amazon, come on.
Okay, we're getting to new hearings now, all right. Sharon, you're going to sit on this along with George and Brad. All right, so Sharon, would you read the first new hearing?
41 Waterline Drive South. Owner, 41 Water Drive LLC, request a written finding under 174-17 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of a deck addition on property located in the R3 in Little Neck Bay Cluster Subdivision Zoning District, MAP 120, parcel 149, Mashpee, Mass.
Good evening again, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, attorney Christopher Corain, representing the applicant, 41 Waterline Drive LLC, the owners of the property are with me tonight. Uh, I am here before you for a request for a written finding, uh, for a very, very modest expansion to the deck in the rear of the property. Um, there's no changes to the, the house. Uh, it's simply 105 square feet of deck that we're requesting, uh, to be added on to an existing deck. I think the best, I know the plans, um, might be tough to read, but I don't know if you have my presentation, you have the photographs. So, what we're looking to do, the deck on the rear will be extended to where those two windows are. So go underneath those windows. And then the deck will bump out a little further out, so it gives you a, a ability to walk, you know, easy access to the, the deck expansion underneath those windows. So in total, it's 105 square feet, uh, real, very modest. It was approved by the Conservation Commission. Uh, the reason we're here is because, uh, it is a non-conforming structure to one of the, uh, side yards. It's in a coastal flood zone, so we don't meet the 50, 50-foot setback. Uh, but otherwise, again, it, it, it's a real modest, um, application. The deck is raised off the ground, and we don't see it as being, you know, anywhere to be considered substantially more detrimental, uh, to the neighborhood.
Right.
Are you, are you gonna add stairs off that extension or?
No, the stairs are already existing, so there wouldn't be any stairs.
So you're going from, in real terms, so to speak, 24.0 to 24.5?
Yes.
I believe that's correct. And it's 30% in Little Neck Bay?
Yes, it's 30% in Little Neck Bay.
I have no problem with this.
Although it's at 100%.
They did correct. And it is getting a little bit closer to the edge of the, the BVW, but again, it's, it's pretty minor. And again, it was approved by Conservation.
Might be the smallest condition ever.
They said that, but they, I think even Conservation suggested, why didn't you go any bigger?
Why, why is it so small? I was thinking the same thing. I know.
They didn't want to be greedy, so.
Truth is, we had Drew come down and he suggested that that would pass, so.
We didn't want to push the envelope. I'm glad somebody asked, because I was just sitting there going.
That's how I did mine, you can't do my house.
The right way to do it, ask Drew first.
There you go.
We do have 25% law coverage?
No, 30.
But it's 30.
30 in Little Neck Bay.
Yeah, animation.
And it's 100% anyways, because we're in the flood zone.
Yeah, this wasn't Little Neck Bay, this would be an issue. If it was a 20% law coverage, Jerry, this would be an issue.
Right, but yeah, but since it's, the Little Neck Bay Cluster Subdivision is permitted for 30% law coverage, so that's why we're able to increase it.
Got it.
Conservation?
Yeah, anybody have any questions, comments, concerns? All right, yeah, why don't we read them?
Okay. 41 Waterline Drive South, no removal of vegetation within the buffer strip allowed from this deck expansion. Border Health, deck only, non-habital space, no comment.
That's it, huh?
Yeah, that's it. This one's easy.
My God. There's no paper, read that.
Nope. Thank you for the pictures, Chris.
I know, right? Yes, yeah, I agree.
All right, anybody in the audience have any comments? Okay, seeing none, why don't we close the public comments section?
I'd like to make a motion to close the public comments of 41 Waterline Drive South.
Second.
All right, Sharon seconds. Sharon, how do you vote?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, any further discussion before we vote on this? Okay, would you make a motion on 41 Waterline Drive South?
I'd like to make a motion to approve 41 Waterline Drive South, owner 41 Waterline Drive LLC, request a written finding of the Section 174-17 and Section 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a deck addition on a property located in R3 in Little Neck Bay Cluster Subdivision Zoning District, map 120, parcel 149 Mashpee Mass, with the following conditions. Board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mash General Law 48, Section 6. Site plan prepared for 41 Waterline Drive LLC, Michael Glass Project, 41 Waterline Drive South, Mashpee Mass, sheet number 1 of 1, date October 24, 2022, drawn by JVB RLR, check by MC, revision dates 3/16/23, add Vista Pruning View Corridor, add zoning table 101822, mitigation plantings, removal, proposed float rotation, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, drawing title, proposed deck addition plan, stamped and signed by Matthew C. Costa, number 52282, Ro Lizardi Rivera, number 46845, conditioned on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Conservation Department comments.
Second.
All right, Sharon seconds. Sharon, how do you vote?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Great, thank you very much, everybody, have a great night.
Well done, good luck.
You didn't have to do the fake cast for sympathy eagle.
Come on, have a good night. I'm so organized tonight.
Probably a pickleball.
Yeah, could be.
I both can.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Oh, no, they had to go. Yeah.
Sorry.
No, no, I forgot, that's all.
I felt bad he had to come here with a cast on his legs. I think Chris could have handled it.
Didn't think it's, did it pass all the, did you pass all the papers in?
Sorry.
Taking it back.
Yeah, he, he stamped some of those. He's gonna do it? Okay. All right, sitting in the next hearing is gonna be Charlie, Bob, and Sharon. Okay, Sharon, would you read the last new hearing, please?
104 DeGrasse Road. Owners, Michael J. and Teresa A. Ronhawk, request a modification to an existing special permit, SP 2021-41, to remove condition line items 8 and 10, and allow finished space at building inspector's discretion, and allow finished space above detached garage at building inspector's discretion on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 104, parcel 118 Mashpee Mass.
Hi.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Ronhawk at 104 DeGrasse Road, and my husband, Michael, and I are here before this board this evening, not to request a variance or any special permit. What we're here to request is that the board remove the restrictions that you placed two years ago on our deed that are restricting us from finishing our space and/or constructing an accessory apartment. We are asking that you allow us to have the rights as property owners and taxpayers that every resident in the town has under the Mashpee zoning bylaws. The restrictions that you placed on our deed two years ago are preventing us from being able to finish our space, preventing us from being able to, if we choose to, create an accessory apartment, which is causing us a financial hardship. We, we are requesting that any, um, construction that we do on the property, any finishing of the space or constructing of an accessory apartment, go through the building commissioner and the health agent, as would any other property owner in the town of Mashpee under the circumstances.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, there were restrictions.
Excuse me?
There were restrictions put on.
Yes.
Back when you applied for the special permit, and then the law changed.
Are you sure? Because I thought this had to do with this road.
Well.
I thought it had to do with the road.
Can we approve the structure? I don't know, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah. Excuse me?
Do we, do we approve the structure in that location, the accessory apartment? Or do we only?
As far as a garage you're talking about?
Yeah.
Or the house itself? The house itself has been done?
No, the garage, the accessory dwelling.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember.
Do we approve it, just weren't allowed to finish it?
Yes.
Let's take a second to roll with this.
Yeah, there's two, there's two, uh, two separate items there. I take, I guess we're gonna take one at a time, eight, eight or 10, whichever you wanna do.
All right. I'm looking at the special permit, and it's, uh, 2021.
Right.
I don't see a date on here, do I, Mary Ann?
Yeah, on the conditions, it's condition 8 and 10.
See, now there's probably a date, July 19, 2021. And on page one down the bottom, it says, "The board had a discussion regarding the detached garage on the site plan that noted a future accessory apartment, but not, did not depict the setback distance line from parcel one." "The board also reviewed the architectural plans and questioned the crafts room having a four-foot case open. After review, the board decided to continue the hearing requesting a revised..."
That's a tick.
It's a tick? Excuse me?
Can I go get a piece of tissue?
Is it a tick?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was crawling on me. It wouldn't even want to.
Where'd that come from?
I don't know. It could have, or maybe it was in the room.
I think it came with me. Came off that Charlie.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Scott. Let me finish this. Says, "After review, the board decided to continue the hearing requesting a revised site plan to depict the setback distance from the garage to parcel one." Parcel one, I think, is the big parcel?
Yeah.
In the back?
Uh, no, I don't think so, it's the opposite way.
That's two.
The skinny, the skinny one's one. The larger one's two.
They also requested a revised architectural plan because the border health agent would most likely request that the crafts room depict a six-foot opening. Otherwise, it would be considered what?
This plan shows the six-foot opening.
Okay, let's go to page two, it says... Okay. "We want a clarification regarding the site revised, revised site plan that depicted two parcels. Uh, we asked Chris Gallagher, the town engineer, to review the plan and provide his comments. Mr. Gallagher said, he went to the site, he said everything applies on parcel one. If a decision is made, it should only apply to parcel one, as shown on the deed book 31084, page 279, because parcel two is not clear. Said that parcel one should have the square footage, and the lot coverage should be stated on the site plan and only pertains to parcel one. He said that the dimensions of all structures should be depicted on the revised site plan and should have the percent lot coverage, so that when a variance is granted, it runs with the deed. The deed contains both lots, but the coverage should pertain to parcel one." Okay, this is Mike, the building commissioner. Mike said he is eliminating the accessory apartment from the garage. Oh, it says, "The board wanted clarification if the garage would include an accessory apartment." Mike said he was eliminating it.
At that time, I didn't.
Because accessory apartments at that time were not allowed.
Right. Uh, the other thing, too, one, one thing I wanted to mention on that, it says, uh, on Chris's comments, it says a variance. We didn't, we never applied for a variance. That was just a special permit to knock the old house down?
Well, depends on how close you were going to that lot.
Well, all the, all the setbacks, all the, all the side setbacks.
Okay, I'm just telling you what it says.
Yeah, I'm just saying that we didn't apply for a variance, so, I don't know what. I think it was a mistake. Excuse me?
He might have felt you needed one, but without him here, we don't know exactly.
Yeah, no, we, we didn't need one, because, uh, the only reason, the only, uh, uh, nonconformity we had was the frontage.
You have the original request that they were asking for? Was it a special permit or a variance?
There's a raisin replace for, just knocking the house down, yeah.
Which is a special permit? Okay, so.
It was a special permit.
I think Mr. Ronhawk is correct that it's not a variance.
Yeah, it wasn't a variance.
I think that's just a.
We didn't, we didn't, no, the, the house was, uh, the existing house was in compliance, setback, side lot, everything, and, um, we, the new house is in the same. The only, the only noncom, the only nonconformity was the frontage.
Yeah, I'm not, this plane doesn't show anything. He's got 16 on one side, he's got 20, 19, yeah.
How many bedrooms are in the house?
Three.
Okay, so this says, let me, let me finish this. Under the special permit findings, 174, 17.1, the zoning bylaws to allow for raisin replace of a pre-existing non-conforming two-bedroom dwelling to replace it with a new three-bedroom dwelling and a detached garage on property located in R3 zoning district, map 104 parcel 18 Mashpee Mass, with the following record. So, in the house, you have three bedrooms, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
And you wanna put a bedroom above the garage, making it four?
Well, possibly above the garage, yeah.
It's designed for?
A four bedroom.
For four.
Yeah.
I mean, if border health is okay with it.
The garage is not built yet. Yeah, the garage isn't.
It's once they have the, I understand, what's the ability to be able to?
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna build a one and a half story garage to then have to rip the roof off. Excuse me?
Here are the, here are the conditions, there's 10 of them, but you're asking for eight and 10.
Yes.
Eight says, "The unfinished space will remain unfinished space in perpetuity unless the applicant returns to s, uh, seek additional approval from the zoning."
And that's what you're doing now?
Right, um, I went down.
And number 10 says, "The proposed garage will have no finished space or accessory apartment contained within." So the bylaw changed when, Mike?
But the unfinished space you're talking about is in the house.
It's in the house, yeah.
That I'm looking at here, it says three, there's three areas that say unfinished space.
Right.
So you, you're looking to be able to finish those spaces?
Yeah.
I would think, you, Mike, I mean, sorry, you can answer that. I would assume as long as they're not made into bedrooms.
Right.
From the definition of a bedroom, why can't they finish this space?
Yeah, I don't. I, I don't.
I don't see any reason why you can't. I don't even know why it was not allowed there.
Excuse me?
Because accessory apartments.
Yeah, I mean.
No, 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 not over the garage. This is, that's separate. The unfinished space is in the house. Go level the house.
I don't, I don't know why the, that was out written in.
I will, I, I did sit down, Mike came in my office. Did, we did go over this. There were, there were, you know, the lots were all. We did go over this. There were, there were, you know, the lots were all funky and everything, but we did have, I can tell, I can say two things about the meeting. You know, I did do the inspections, he did build it the way to the board's directives. And the, the second thing, I don't think that these requests for eight and 10 are unreasonable at all. They're not unreasonable requests.
My gut feeling is what happened on the unfinished storage is your plans said unfinished storage, and whoever made the motion probably said, "I'm gonna condition it, it'll stay unfinished."
Yeah.
Because that's what was on the point.
Yeah, I didn't really see.
That was probably, that's my gut feeling. I have no idea. I don't know who made the motion.
Right.
But that's my gut feeling.
Yeah.
Me, as one person, I don't see any reason why they can't finish those spaces.
Right.
As long as they don't become a bedroom.
Yeah, as long as David approves it.
They can become a bedroom.
Right.
One, if you don't do the one on the garage.
If I don't do the one on the garage, right, correct, right.
Okay, that's, that's all I have on that.
Which is the garage's not even...
And now with the new, now we allow accessory dwelling.
Yeah.
So I understand why they're backing.
Okay.
Yeah, and then...
For the record here, accessory apartments is on page 81. It's 174-45.4 accessory apartment, and it was approved by the attorney general on 2/11/20. So that's the reason why. And Mike, you've...
It said 20.
2/11/20?
20, this is from 21.
This is from 21.
Yeah.
I did see Mike today.
So how you doing?
Good, he's doing well.
Yeah, why?
Yeah.
You know what?
I, I just...
How old is this? 20.
Oh, that's why.
Do we have a newer book?
I might.
Let's get the exact date on.
What's the reference, Sharon?
174, 45.4. I need a new book. It's three years old.
You'd think the chairman would have a new book.
Wow.
I don't even know where my book is.
I know on my head, this is not...
I haven't seen it since I knocked down there.
174, there's what?
45.4. Just looking for a date.
I, I don't have one. I got 45.6. I'm guessing. 2/11/20? 45.5?
Yeah, but you got the old book, too.
174, 45.4.
Accessory apartment, is it?
Added 10/20/2003. Approved by the attorney general 11/14/2003, so.
What's the date of the book?
2020.
201? Okay, doesn't, doesn't really all matter. We know it was, we know it was changed. Okay.
So we really don't need to know?
No, I just, for the record, we...
This has been cleaned up a lot since I...
Yeah, but that was, we, that, that would...
Okay. Do we have any comments from the...
I think border health, removal of eight, if storage areas are finished, egresses between storage areas must not have doors to avoid definition or bedrooms. Removal of number 10, septic is designed for four-bedroom above the garage, property is set for four bedrooms. So border health has no, and it's not in wet with this jurisdiction.
Okay, anything else? Anybody in the audience have any comments? Alex? None? Okay, would you make a motion to close the public comment?
I'd like to make a motion to close public comments, the 104 DeGrasse.
Second.
Okay, Sharon seconds. Let me get my... All right, Charlie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Any further comment? Okay, would you make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve 104 DeGrasse Road owners Michael J. and Teresa A. Ron Hawk, request a modification to the existing special permit, SP-2021-41, to remove condition line items eight and 10, and allow finished space at a building inspector's discretion, and allow finished space above the detached garage at a building inspector's discretion. Property located in R3 zoning district, map 104, parcel 18, Mashpee, Mass. with the following conditions. Floor plan prepared by, for Ron Hawk residence 104 DeGrasse Road, Mashpee, Mass., 81.0, lower floor plan prepared by Chris Warner, architect, drawn by CBW, date 10/2/20, steel quarter inch goes one foot, proposed finished space game room, proposed finished space play area, proposed finished space gym. Two, the board to vote in favor or denies removal, line item eight, the unfinished space will remain unfinished space in perpetuity unless the applicant returns to seek additional approval from the zoning board. The board to vote in favor or denies removal, line item 10, the proposed garage will have no finished space or accessory apartment contained within. Conditioned on all town department comments written to the record, including not, but not limited to the border health comments. Do we have to make any special comment? Because it says in favor or deny, so I'm proving, all right, so we have to, each person has to say? Okay.
So we vote to approve the removal of the conditions.
So why don't, why don't you read that? The instructions.
The board to vote in favor or denies removal of line item eight, the unfinished space will remain unfinished.
Yeah.
Do we need to vote separately on each line? Okay, so this one will be for line eight.
Yeah, to, you have to vote in favor or to deny the removal of the line.
Okay, so Sharon?
I second.
Sharon made the second, so Charlie, how do you vote?
Uh, yes.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor of?
Removal.
In favor of removal of line item eight.
Got it. Bob?
Yes.
In favor of removal?
Removal.
And Sharon?
Yes, in favor of removal of line item eight.
Yes, in favor of removal of line item eight.
And I vote in favor.
And I'll be voting on the, in favor or denial of removal of line item 10.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, Sharon seconds. Charlie, how do you vote on this one?
In favor of removal of line item 10.
And Bob?
In favor of remove line item 10.
In favor of removing line item 10.
I'm in favor of removal of line item 10.
And I'm in favor.
Thank you, thank you.
Guys, have a good night. Thank you.
Take care.
Yeah, take care.
We'll be seeing you.
Have a good one, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Take care, Dave.
Sorry.
Go ahead, she need the pen?
All right. Solve this.
Just trying to stay organized here. Okay, do we have all the plans in?
Yep.
Motions? Oh, we get the, um, crack here. Yeah, but Bron usually sits there, doesn't he?
Bill's usually there.
Bill.
Well, complainer about the speaker.
Hey, wait a minute, this is just, this is a big one.
Yep.
Excuse me. Five, 10, 12. Play that, I don't believe it. Five, 10, 12. Any more? This one, too? Probably don't need that. Five, 10, 12. So I need that this one. All right, we in good shape? Okay, Sharon, would you read the first other business?
George is gonna do it.
George?
For other business, board to vote Sharon Sangelier to become a full board member.
Okay, we're certainly gonna miss Jim, and again, we wish him well with his treatments. Need to recommend to the select board a replacement for Jim, because the select board are the ones that really appoint the zoning board people. We don't get to appoint them.
Do we make recommendations? We make recommendations, though, right?
Yeah, as in the past, was recommended with the person with the most seniority, and I'd like to recommend Sharon. Do we have any comments or discussions on that?
Totally approved.
Okay, uh, let's see. Hey, why don't I make a motion that we recommend Sharon as Jim's replacement on the board? Do we have a second on that?
I will second that.
Charlie seconds. Do we need to do a roll call? Okay, Bob, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Brad?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Sharon, you gonna vote for yourself?
I'm gonna abstain.
Scott?
I guess.
And I vote yes. Well done. Congrats, Sharon.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of April 26, 2023.
Throw the second?
Second.
Charlie seconds. All in favor?
All right.
Hi. Okay, uh, let's see. George, would you like to make a motion to close?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Bob seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.